All right, we are going to get started. This is our regular meeting of the Hamilton County Board of County Commissioners, June 12, We start our meetings with silent prayer and the Pledge of Allegiance. Please join us in silent prayer. Amen.
The Pledge of Allegiance. To the United States of America, and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, with liberty and justice for all.
Let's do introductions from the deists. Kristi Richel, Assistant Clerk.
Leslie Hervey, Clerk to the Board.
Stephanie Semerodumas, Commissioner.
Hamilton County Commissioner Alicia Reese.
Jeff Aludo, County Administrator.
Ann Schooling, Assistant Prosecuting Attorney.
And I'm County Commissioner Denise Treehouse. Welcome to all of you. I am going to make a motion that we approve of the minutes of the previous session.
Second.
Commissioner Treehouse.
Yes.
Commissioner Semerodumas.
Yes.
Commissioner Reese.
Yes.
Thank you. We are going to take public comments out of order with your deference, Commissioners. We have one person that's filled out a card, and I don't want to have to overly delay that individual. So Stefan Pryor is here. You've got the pleasure of the floor for two minutes.
Good afternoon, Commissioners. I'm here today to speak about the senior citizens. I know I'm off radar with this subject, but today is important. Our senior citizens are not getting fed right at these facilities. I've had pictures up there on your deists up there about how they get treated at these senior citizen homes. I went to a senior citizen home and interviewed one of the patients, I mean, one of the residents there, and she said, "We go hungry from up here. They don't feed us." But what they feed in them is hamburger buns without the meat, just fries, powdered eggs, just eggs, no meat, no fruit, no vegetables, no nothing. And I had to come down here to address this because it's a very serious issue, not just one nursing home. Some of these nursing homes are, their family members sent me pictures, even had notes on the door. No food from the kitchen, please. They need help at these nursing homes, especially this nursing home I gave you, the business car, Ventores, up in Ventores Park, Park Drive, off Ferguson, in Walmart, the Western Hill area. And it's a very serious issue that family members there are getting mistreated, not just there. Lincoln Crawford Care, one of the guys sent me a picture of how his father's living. It looked like a jail, a penitentiary. And it's real, real sad that we all gonna get old one day. We don't want to get treated like that in these senior homes at all, or these residents. And it's very serious, too, that y'all come out, or have inspectors come out and see this, food, health inspectors, you know, to come out and see all this, because this lady said, "We go hungry." It's on my Facebook page, on the champion prior, you can see the interview, 132,000 views spoke about this. And it's really sad. They need y'all help. That's why I'm down here to report to y'all. I love y'all, and nothing y'all can do about it. Thank you.
Thank you. And I'm going to have my staff follow up with you before you walk out. Thanks.
Can I follow up? Because I was going to put that in my comments when we get to, because some others had reached out. Couple things, as we know, we were at the State House at one point. The licensing, that happens at the state level, so we definitely need to reach out to the state senators and state representatives, because that is governed under the state in terms of nursing homes. But I would ask Mr. Aludo if he would get something back to us to see, reaching out to our Health Commissioner, and to see if there are anything dealing with our zoning or what other jurisdiction through the prosecutor's office can we implement to help. But I do know that certainly the state has to be of state legislators, and they're the ones that can make a call, and the inspectors have to come and take a look at it. But if there's any other things that we can do at this level, I'd like you to be able to get us something in writing regarding this. I think we all are consistent about our seniors, and you mess with the seniors, that's a big problem, but we got to have the right jurisdiction folks involved. So, thank you.
Thank you. Okay, let's move on then to our presentation. Got a presentation by Jeff Aludo regarding Paycor Stadium.
Thank you, Commissioners. Let's see, I do have a presentation, so there is a PowerPoint, if it's possible to tee that up. Thank you, Kristi. So, I'm happy to provide an update to the Board today, and by extension, I guess, to the public on the status of our discussions with the Cincinnati Bengals on a new lease for Paycor Stadium. The Board has been, before I go with my presentation, just a quick note, the Board has been clear that it desires a new lease for Paycor Stadium that's consistent with the NFL market, keeps the team here for as long as possible, doesn't raise taxes, and is a deal which is financially sustainable. I know this is an incredibly important issue to people in this community, so whether you're concerned with keeping our teams, both of our teams here on the riverfront for a long time to come, or whether you're just concerned with the effective and prudent use of your tax dollars, or both, I hope this presentation is helpful in understanding how we're attempting to approach and balance both of those priorities. So, our purpose again today is to update the public on the status of Paycor negotiations, and I'll do that by summarizing some of the specific terms that were exchanged between the county and the team back in early April of this year. In the interest of transparency, I just think it's important to indicate that this discussion focuses on a snapshot in time, so it does not necessarily represent the current status of negotiations, but nonetheless, I hope that, and I think, it can be very helpful in understanding some of the major drivers in these conversations, which many times, if you look around other communities, are not always out on the most publicly facing discussions, and the Board has been very clear that it wants to ensure transparency of this very important issue. So, based upon this presentation, I also just want to spotlight the opportunity for regular community feedback at our Board meetings through public comment, as well as the availability of a public input opportunity through our website at HamiltonCountyOhio.gov, keyword Paycor. So, if you're watching at home, if you don't have the chance to come downtown, there is an opportunity through our website for continued feedback. First, some background on the current lease. And I'm going to keep this very high level. I'm not intending to go into extensive depth on this. I want to get to the update here as quickly as I can. But the original lease, as most people are probably aware by now, was entered into the Board's records back on May 29, 1997. It covers 29 years through June 30 of 2026. It contains the team's option for two five-year extensions after that date, the first of which must be executed by June 30 of this year. The lease covers everything from term, rent, use of the stadium, revenue rights, management of the stadium, operations and maintenance, capital improvements, et cetera. It's been amended on several occasions, and the county is now seeking a new, long-term, sustainable lease with the team. It's also a little bit difficult to discuss the lease without first talking a little bit about the primary source of public funding which supports our riverfront stadium assets. The stadium sales tax fund was approved by voters in 1996. As of this year, it generated a little bit north of, it's expected to generate a little bit north of $100 million per year, and covers all of our obligations related to both the Reds and the Bengals, Great American Ballpark, and Paycor Stadium respectively on the riverfront. It covers everything from debt service to operations and maintenance, capital repairs, a pilot payment to CPS, and the property tax relief program that the Board acts on each year. I note this because this is the county's sole source of funding on these initiatives. As the public digest these discussions, I don't want people thinking that the county is entertaining the concept of a sales tax increase to fund a new lease. We're only talking in this conversation about the existing stadium sales tax fund. So, what are the types of things being discussed and negotiated? NFL leases can be fairly complicated documents, and while there are similarities between them, they're also very different in various ways. The county's initial lease with the team contains alone 33 articles with numerous subarticles. It's been amended multiple times, as we've discussed, so the minutia of these terms can get quite complicated. But in the end, I don't think most people would be surprised at the major issues that are driving these discussions. They include term, capital contribution, operations and maintenance, annual capital repairs, use of the stadium, disposition of stadium revenues, et cetera. I think, for the most part, if people have been tuning into these meetings, these are things that they've heard the Board talk about over and over again. To be clear, these are not the only issues being discussed, and I'm not minimizing the importance of any other issue, but they are some of the major financial drivers within the discussions. If I wasn't clear earlier, I just want to, because I do want to walk through the, some of the primary terms being discussed by the team and the county, I want to get to that very quickly here. But I do want to make it clear that the terms in this presentation reflect initial discussions and exchanges between the county and the team, and do not necessarily reflect the current status of negotiations or what is currently being deliberated. But again, I hope that the discussion is helpful in understanding some of the major issues that are being deliberated in the negotiations, that folks may not, in all communities, get a chance to hear about before a lease is finalized. So, I'll dive right in, Commissioners. In terms of the terms and the provisions of the lease that are being discussed as it relates to the term sheets that were exchanged back in April, of course, term itself is one of the most important aspects of any lease, and it's certainly a primary point of discussion here. Simply, how long is the team committed to being here in the community? And that's important for several reasons. First, just upfront, the team is, and the community is proud of its Major League sports teams, wants to secure them in the community for as long as they can, for all the benefits that Major League professional sports teams bring to a community. The term is also important because it has a direct bearing on how much the county is able to afford and to debt finance. The shorter the term, the less the county is able to finance. Since the initiation of the early discussions, it's been apparent, as you can see from the table in front of you, that the team has desired, relative to the county, a shorter term. The county has desired, relative to the team, a longer term, for the reasons I mentioned earlier. The original lease was 29 years plus extensions. In April, the county proposed a 15-year lease with a five-year extension based upon state participation. The team had proposed essentially a five-year term, which could be extended to 10 years, provided the county made an additional capital contribution. So, you can see laid out in front of you the current lease versus the team's April proposal and the county's April proposal, both base term and extension options. Next, I'll discuss capital renovation contributions. In other words, how much is each party going to actually pay for what we estimate will be a renovation of approximately $830 million? So, while not necessarily a defined lease term, it's important because capital contribution for the county translates directly into debt service, which is the largest annual expense in our stadium model. The public contribution to the initial Paycor construction was approximately 94%. The Board has said from the beginning that the new deal had to include a more equitable funding split. So, the county's April proposal included the contribution of $270 million from the county, $210 million from the team, with a request of $350 million from the state, recognizing that we're still in conversations with the state about securing a capital contribution. The team's proposal was for a county contribution of $608 million over 10 years, with the ability for a future state contribution to offset that county number. The team proposed allocating $120 million of team money for the renovation project, but to be clear, within their term sheet, they also included some additional items, including recent capital expenditures, et cetera, that would bring that total up to $200 million. I'll next turn to rent. This is a fairly simple one, which I think most people can appreciate and relate to in any landlord-tenant relationship. Under the initial lease, the team paid rent for the first nine years of the lease. The team also paid $500,000 a year in rent for five years as a part of the scoreboard replacement project, which was done back in 2014. Under the county's April proposal, the county proposed a lease amount of $1 million annually through the term of the lease. The team had proposed $1 million annually for five years. Determining how we will make continued capital improvements in the stadium is also critically important to the future of Paycor Stadium and to the new lease. Under the current lease, the county bears most of this responsibility, although the team has the option of making capital improvements if it desires. The county and the team, I think it's important to indicate, have also worked cooperatively together in the past to structure amendments to the lease, MOUs, et cetera, to support the procurement of big-ticket capital items like scoreboards, et cetera. The county's proposal back in April would establish a regular capital asset planning cycle, and a regular annual county contribution to capital, with the team covering capital costs above the county's annual contribution. The county's proposal, also by omission, would not include, some of the unique language that's in the current lease, related to things like what are termed in the lease enhancements or requirements by the county to procure certain improvements if a certain number of NFL teams have those amenities. We just think there's a better way to secure the future of the stadium through a more structured planning process that can work both for the team and for the county. Another important provision relates to how the parties cover operations and maintenance expenses. Under the current lease, the county is responsible for most of the operations and maintenance expenses outside of game day expenses, which the team pays. The county's proposal seeks to transition this to more of a shared responsibility. The county's term sheet back in April proposed a shared revenue approach whereby the team would provide $6.5 million annually to help offset operations and maintenance. The team's April term sheet did not speak to this directly, but it does recommend a percentage of city earnings and admissions tax be applied to operations and maintenance of the stadium. Stadium utilization, the Board has been very clear about the desire to continue to improve and maximize the utilization and the use of Paycor Stadium. It's one of our community's greatest and largest entertainment assets, has been a significant part of the Board's policy priorities for a significant amount of time. So, under the county's proposal, the team and the county would jointly agree upon a third-party booking agent to maximize usage of the stadium for major events and community programming, and we would discuss the event revenue in the context of whether or not there was, there wound up being a more equitable split on operations, maintenance, and capital expenditures. The county's proposal also included what we call a community benefits agreement. It would ensure inclusion within the capital renovation program and within operations of the stadium itself. It would ensure prevailing wage for workers, and given the size and scale of the renovation project, it would also include an opportunity for things like workforce training within the capital project itself. It also proposed that the county and team discuss a mechanism for supporting high school and community youth sports, both from the perspective of their activity within the stadium and out in the community as well. Our proposal also recommended that we include an NFL standard non-relocation agreement into the new lease. To be clear, the current To be clear, the current lease contains a language on non-relocation. We would just want to update that with language that we felt was appropriate and consistent with modern NFL leases, recognizing this was inserted decades ago. And finally, when we began this conversation, commissioners, years ago, the county and the team had to first assess whether a renovation or a new build was, made more sense for the community and the team. The team and the county both decided that a renovation made more practical and financial sense, given the fact that a new stadium would have cost the community in excess of two billion dollars. So the county's April proposal simply indicates that we need to prescribe a timeline in advance for that next conversation to occur. That same conversation about new build versus renovation is going to be a conversation that happens again in the future, and we just think it's prudent to have the parties agree in advance on the timing of those future discussions. So commissioners, that is a brief run-through on the term sheets as exchanged back in April. Wanted to try to keep this concise, turn it back over to the board for comments. I hope this has been helpful. I know the board's aware of this information. I hope it's been helpful to the, to the public and the public's understanding as to some of the major issues being discussed in negotiations with the team. To be clear, negotiations continue, as is the case in any negotiations. They ebb and flow, and we're still hopeful of reaching a deal with the team as expeditiously as possible. So with that said, Commissioner Dreehouse, I will turn it back over to you for discussion, comments, and questions.
Thank you, Jeff. I want to just pick up on what you left off with, which is, I do think this is helpful information for the community. I can't go anywhere without somebody asking me about the Bengals. How's it going? What's going on with the lease? And so I think while we are in negotiations, we wanted to do as much as we can to get the community up to date on what's being talked about by way of the lease, the term, you know, all the rest of it. And so I think it is helpful to, to have a presentation at this moment in time, knowing that we're not finished with the negotiations. So just from my perspective, as a commissioner, I have always taken my role as a county commissioner seriously, both by way of protecting county assets and protecting the taxpayer investments. And so the taxpayers have been top of mind as we've gone into these negotiations. And Jeff, as you said, we really, we started negotiations with the Bengals, as far as I'm concerned, eight years ago, you know, when I entered, that was my first introduction to the negotiations. They were started long before that because we're always negotiating with the Bengals. We've had many amendments to the original lease, and so it has been an ongoing conversation from my perspective for the last eight years. But the taxpayers have always been top of mind, and they have weighed in. People have been, you know, lighting up my email and letting me know when I'm out in public about their opinions related to the lease and to trying to keep the Bengals here in Cincinnati. So just a couple of reminders, and you highlighted these. The good news is, we don't have to build a new stadium, and the Bengals and the county agree to that. That is because we've done a good job of taking care of the stadium, and I think that's something this community should be really proud of. And then the second one you talked a little bit about was the, the impact, the annual impact of all things at the banks, including the stadiums. And so I think we do have to recognize that having the team here is a community asset for not only that reason, but other reasons. But I do think we need to recognize that. And generally, people do want to keep the team here, they just don't want to do it under the current lease. And so the presentation just highlights that we're doing exactly what we said we were going to do a number of months ago, when we really started to talk about this in public, which was try to keep the team here for a long-term, enter a long-term agreement with a better lease and no new taxes. And as you can see through the presentation, that's exactly what we've done by way of what we have advocated for and our version of the lease. Some of the points include the financial stack, which we have talked about before, diversifying the stack so that it's not ninety-four cent, or ninety-four percent county, but rather county, team, NFL, and the state of Ohio. We have talked about this long-term commitment, and you can see that by way of our lease negotiation, you know, parameters around the timing. We've advocated very strongly for more public access to the building. It belongs to the public, and so we need to make sure that the public gets to utilize the asset, which is the stadium, and that we make it more accessible to the community. So whether that's a high school football game, or more concerts, or graduations, or wedding receptions, I mean, there's so much potential in this building, and we really do need to make sure that the public gets to use their facility as much as possible. And then we talked a little bit about stadium-derived revenue, which is something that we have not seen a lot of from the Bengals in the past, but we're hoping to get some of that in the future, and it's a reflection of what's going on throughout the market and throughout the country. So we've included that as part of our lease negotiation. And so as you say, these term sheets are from April, so they are, they're not the starting point, but they're kind of a midpoint by way of the negotiations. The Bengals have made it clear they want to stay here in Cincinnati, and we are working hard to get to a solution with the team so that we have a long-term agreement that is also beneficial to the team and to the taxpayers without increasing any, any sales tax and getting this accomplished. So thank you for the presentation. I appreciate it. I'm going to turn it over to Commissioner Summer Ademas.
Thank you, and thank you, Jeff, for the summary. I thought it was a good summary, of course, of where we've been and where we're trying to go. And I just want to say, the good old, good old days of the old lease is, is over, and we've said that so many times. It was very important to me that we were transparent with the media and the residents to see where we've been and where we're trying to go, and I think Jeff did a great job of doing that. I want a lease that I'm not ashamed of, and I can sign and feel really good about, and so I think we're working toward that. I've been primarily focused on really what Commissioner President, President Dreehouse has said as it relates to the ninety-four percent. We know that residents were paying, that's over, that's old news, too. We're not going to allow, I'm not going to allow that to happen. The length of the agreement, of course, for me, is no less than fifteen years with a possible five-year option. And also, as was said earlier, an agreement to clarify that the stadium is the people's place. The stadium is for the use of different groups and different entities, agencies that want to use it for whatever purpose. And we must remember when we negotiate that it's exactly what we say. It's a give and take. It takes two sides to make it work, and so that's what we're doing. I think this report will indicate that we've been giving quite a lot. We've been leaning, negotiating. We've not only been negotiating, but we've been considering both sides as we look at this possible agreement. So we're on our way. I think it's very clear what our focus is and what we will accept and not accept, and I think they've been clear by the indication of this report. But we're moving forward, and hopefully we can come to some conclusion where we can all agree, and as I said, a give and take in this process.
Thank you. Commissioner Reese.
Thank you very much. Thank you, Mr. Ludo, for presenting to the public the documents that thus far has been presented and moving forward. I want to start my comments off, we had a, we started our meeting off talking about senior citizens that are being mistreated right now in their living conditions. As I look at this lease, I cannot look at the Bengals lease in an isolated vacuum. I must look at what are the, what's the economy look like? What is the economic climate? And I think one thing I want to make sure that we keep in front of, and we're interact, we're interchanging language. I think all language should be, this is a negotiation between Bengals ownership and the taxpayers, not the county. We just put county down. It's the taxpayers who have to pay for this. So it's a negotiation between the Bengals' ownership, not the team that's running on the field, and the taxpayers of Hamilton County. So I'd like to have that language in there because we must understand that the only reason that I'm sitting here, we're sitting here, and the lawyers that we hired, only reason we're having this conversation with the Bengals' ownership is because we are elected and paid for, all salaries, all contracts, paid for by the taxpayers of Hamilton County. So when you go into a negotiation, you have to decide who is representing who. Our job, and I will say, speaking for myself, what I see, our job and our lawyers' job is to come out with something that's good for our clients, our shareholders, which is the taxpayers. Bengals' ownership, they've hired their lawyers so that they could come back for their sales, and if they have a few investors, to get the best deal, to make the most money for their owners. They're not here for the taxpayers, and us as the taxpayers should not be here trying to accommodate the Bengals. At the end, we want to come out with a win-win, and in the past, we've come out with, the Bengals' ownership won, but the citizens of Hamilton County, the taxpayers, not county government, the taxpayers, they were the losers. And so far, the Bengals have been undefeated against the taxpayers. With that being said, number one, we are couching this as we're trying to get a deal, a new lease, a new contract. But what I'm seeing on here is an LOI. An LOI. So then you look up, what is LOI? We're doing all this work for an LOI. It says, let's look at the legal bindingness of an LOI, letter of intent. LOIs are generally non-binding, meaning they don't create enforceable obligations on either party. However, certain clauses, like those related to exclusivity or confidentiality and due diligence, may be legal binding in some jurisdictions, but this is in no way a binding lease. So my question today is, are we negotiating a lease? Just like last time, we had a MOU, and people got confused, and the media, y'all ran out with a headline, they got a deal! And the MOU specifically said at the end that this is in no way affecting a new lease or affecting the old lease. It was the last paragraph. Y'all all got a copy of it. Well, we put headlines out that people thought we got a deal, and all we did was add sixty-five million dollars worth of more obligation to the current lease. This lease is still in effect. It's not an old lease. It's still here until we get a new replacement lease. And what I'm seeing on these papers is that we're looking to get an LOI. So we don't went from MOU, memorandum understanding, to an LOI, letter of intent. Neither one is binding, and neither one produces a new lease. So I wanted that as we are being transparent. Number two, I'm reading what the Bengals presented to us, and you guys got a copy you'll be running with. It's interesting. In theirs, they went into, they mentioned the city of Cincinnati. I don't know why. Hamilton County, state of Ohio, and the Bengals will affect an agreement with the city of Cincinnati whereby fifty percent of tax revenues derived by the city from Paycor operations will be used for the stadium maintenance and repairs. This is my first time hearing of this. I didn't know the city was involved. They went on in their proposal, said if Hamilton County provides the above funding for stadium repairs by June first, I think we are in what, June is today the eleventh or the tenth, 2025, then the initial term of the Paycor stadium lease shall be extended to June 2031. Had that in there. They also go down here, is interesting, says Hamilton County may secure funding participation from the state of Ohio on the same terms as set forth and above, and then they put a parentheses, fifty percent minimum county funding. That's interesting. Now, I also, of course, all of us hear about this Bengal lease, and today I got a call. They said, hey, do y'all got a deal or not? You know, that's, that's, that's what they said in nineteen ninety-six, and then the people saw the deal, and it was like, oh my God, somebody's got to get voted out of office. And they did get voted out of office. Because the people, the taxpayers, the clients, the shareholders, were not happy with what came out of it. And they wanted to have some, not just input, some power to hold somebody accountable, and they did. With that being said, they asked me, they said, well, the state, and I want to put this out, well, the state is going with Cleveland, because Cleveland is together. Well, that ain't true. The city of Cleveland is in fights with the Haslins, and the Haslins is in fights with the city of Cleveland. And the state of Ohio still is proposing to give them six-hundred million dollars off the top. What they're proposing for us, so I want to put that out there, they said, oh, they would have gave you more if the county and the Bengals could have got together. The Haslins and the Browns are not getting together with the city of Cleveland, and they got six-hundred million dollars proposed and going to get it in the budget. So we want to take that off the table. Well, if the county and the Bengals could have got together, they could have, no, the Haslins is running up there without the city of Cleveland, the mayor's mad, they going back and forth, the county up there is mad, they going back and forth, but they still put six-hundred million dollars in the proposed budget, off the top. Then they said for Hamilton County, we're willing to possibly put another fund together that every professional group that has a stadium, and probably add in Ohio State, you guys could go and we'll put a team together, and you guys go and apply. Well, I've been at the state, not just as a legislator, but I've also been at the state on the administrative side. Once you pass something, you gotta, I had to write rules and those kind of things. But I just want to put it, it's not the county and the Bengals can't get together, have anything to do with what the state is going to propose, because they're fighting up in Cleveland. So I wanted to take that off the table. And what they end up with is whatever they end up with, but the point is, they not stopping Cleveland from being in the proposals, and they're fighting. Number two. Number three, let's talk about the rent. So in the proposal, we say we want to get a million dollars, and I think it was maybe a couple of years, five years or so, right? Was it five years? How many, how many years?
Their proposal was a million dollars for five years. Ours was a million dollars throughout the course of the lease.
Yeah. So they wanted a million dollars for five years. They have a similar proposal in the current lease, and that's on page twenty-four of the current lease. They negotiated a only nine years. They always want to put a cap on how many years they want to pay rent. Boy, wouldn't the, wouldn't the people that are taxpayers out here that's renting, wouldn't they want to put a cap? I only got to pay rent for five years, and I get to live free. In here, the, every year, it went down. It started at one-point-seven million. Now, remember, this is nineteen ninety-seven value. We asking for a million dollars now in twenty-twenty-five dollars value. So really, they kind of put more in before, because one-point-seven million dollars was worth a lot more in nineteen ninety-seven than it is in two thousand and five. And then each year, they went down. One-point-seven million, second year, one-point-six million, kept going down, 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 to the ninth year of nine-hundred thousand dollars. So we want to pay attention to that rent category, but I found it fascinating that they only want to pay in twenty-twenty-five value, one million dollars, only for five years. So I have some concerns about the rent category. The other component that I have a concern about is debt capacity. Okay? We tell everybody, we can't do it, we can't do it, we don't want to get a bad this and that. Debt capacity, we're responsible on these leases. We got the Bengals, and we still owe debt. It's not paid off. The Bengals stadium is not paid off. So we still got current debt, and then, of course, more debt. We've got the Reds, Great American Ballpark, is not paid off. But we still got them coming up, and they have some new designs they don't put out. Also, I want to make sure that we have room for future. We don't want to tie up the future. I'm mad, I'm tired of it. I wasn't here in nineteen ninety-six or nineteen ninety-seven, and they got my hands tied with a ninety-four percent. and they got my hands tied with a ninety-four percent, six percent that I have to, I have no say on. So I don't want to tie up the future. There may be something as a county that's futuristic and we don't want to say that we just, we don't have any money. I don't know if it's arena. It might be something else. But I want to make sure we've got some wiggle room for future potential projects to keep our county current. I like the fact we've got to get this maintenance off of us. Can't have an old car with no warranty and the engine go out. Boy, that's the worst thing to get caught with. And we've got an older stadium, even though we kept the bare bones looking good, it's going to get older. And every week, we're voting on something. We got the, the, the water, the field, every week we got hundreds of thousands of dollars we're voting on. So we want, we don't want to get caught with the maintenance. We want to get that off the taxpayers' backs. Um, I'm not as excited right now because we've gone from MOUs to now LOIs and not a real deal. I don't necessarily think that this is, because what's going to happen is we get an LOI that we still negotiating. I think we need to get as much specifics as possible. In this thing, the thing that the Bengals ownership did a great job of, this lease that is lopsided, is they got all their stuff in writing and everything for the taxpayers was aspirational. And in this LOI, we got a lot of things that's aspirational where they get things that you must give me money by this time. You must do this by this time. You know, the MOU, you must give us some money by this date. You must do these things by that date. And then everything for the taxpayers is aspirational. We'd like to hire a third party, but come tell us what y'all going to do in that stadium and we'll work it out down the road. LOI does nothing but kick the can down the road. MOU, kick the can down the road. So I want to make sure we don't make the mistake that was made by predecessors where they went aspirational and the Bengals ownership went, went with contract language that is binding. And that is a concern. My last concern, let me just say, I'm going to be upfront. What's in this deal for the taxpayers? Are they going to get the thirty percent property tax break? Right now, property tax is jumping through the roof. People are crying. I got guys at grandma's house, forty-seven years, Mike can't hang on to it. We got to have something for the taxpayers. Now, some will say, well, not everybody has a house. My answer to that is, not everybody's going to nine games of the Bengals. And we're giving, we're talking about giving them an eight-hundred-million-dollar deal. Less people are going to the games than own homes and live in Hamilton County. So if we can come with something and figure out financially, we can't be broke with the taxpayers and all of a sudden we rich and we can come up with some creative financing for billionaires to become gazillionaires. In Cleveland, the Haslins is putting up fifty percent on a billion-dollar deal. They putting cash money up. On our side, we're talking, we, we, we happy about a hundred and twenty million dollar loan. And by the way, the county taxpayers, you still got to put up sixty million for us to get this loan. Haslins come in and say, we putting up half of the billion dollars. So I'm concerned while we, it's a hard thing to get out of because we was at ninety-four percent, we trying to crawl out of it. But I still think that the deal does not present anything. If I'm a taxpayer, what are you presenting to me? I'm still going to be paying sales tax when I go to Kroger's, when I go buy some clothes. I got a property tax that's about to put me out of my house. And now you're coming back with a deal that doesn't even allow for the thirty percent to be voted on for seven-plus years. That's a deal going backwards on the taxpayers, not forward. For seven years, we won't even be able to vote on thirty percent. So if we are representing the taxpayers, if they're our clients, you got to come back to the clients and say, here's something for you. And that's where I think we have fallen short. We, we, we've tried to make sure, we want to, Bengals, we want to hold your hand and say, we, we did it. Reds, we want to make sure you okay. But we ain't making sure grandma is okay. We ain't making sure that hard-working man working three jobs. Lady just texted me saying, man, I got to work three jobs now. And she's middle-class. Trying to hang on to her and her husband's house, and he done picked up two jobs and he got cancer. Where is the deal that we're supposed to get? We represent just the taxpayers. That's the only people we supposed to represent. That's what we paid to represent. Where is the taxpayers winning in this deal? That they can feel. The percentages they can't feel because they still paying. So I think it's some more work to be done. I'm glad we're working, but LOIs, MOUs, I've been saying for years, when we going to get down to the lease? We knew in nineteen ninety-seven when they signed this that June of twenty-twenty-five, they got to let us know what they going to do. That's a long time for us to have opportunity to get a new lease. So those are my comments, and it's not just my comments. So you talking about, because all of us are elected. I've already been hired. Already been hired by the two-hundred-and-eighteen-thousand people that hired me. I'm fighting for the taxpayers who have told me, what do we get out of this? Because we are struggling. So Mr. Ludo, some more work to be done, but it's good that the people know what the Bengals have been saying. We ninety-five, we was ninety percent there. I hope not with this. Hope this wasn't what they were talking about and then pay, we was ninety percent of the deal, not this deal. Not the one they done gave us, the one pager. I hope that's not what they were referring to. Uh, and let me lastly say, this is nothing personal. This is the taxpayers that's out here struggling. We just heard it. We got some pictures over here. They struggling. And we've got to consider it all. Unfortunately, as commissioners, we got to deal with everything. And we just can't put a little fund together and say, go over there. If you got low income, you can apply and all. No. We collecting from everybody and I want to see the people get a break. So I am concerned that the thirty percent is not considered. I'm concerned there's no break for the taxpayers directly in their pockets. Uh, but there's millions going into the pockets of others. And I hope that we can keep working on those components. Thank you.
Thank you. Administrator, do you have anything further to add before we move on to the rest of the agenda?
No, nothing further, Commissioner.
Great, thank you. All right, um, let's move on to comments and motions of the commissioners. Commissioner Summer Dumis?
Thank you. I just have a few comments from, um, this last week. I did a, had, um, a couple of things that were exciting. Uh, Metro Now and Forest Park, uh, opened up. Forest Park and Pleasant Run, there will be a Metro Now. It started June the eighth, and it's only two dollars for those who are in Forest Park, anywhere in that area, uh, that you'd like to have transportation. Uh, you just give them a call, get the app and they'll come and get you. And then wherever you land in Forest Park is two dollars to get back. So we were, I think, the third entity that they started for Metro Now. And I'm just really excited. It was a twenty-year vision for me as a resident of Forest Park, just knowing that transportation in that area, half of Forest Park, did not have any bus transportation. But once I met Darryl Haley and his team and issue seven passed, he made no promises, but he said they would do their due diligence to see if that was an area that needed additional, um, transportation, and it was. And I'm just extremely excited about that. I've been doing some planning for our satellite office. Uh, I have been talking since I first came here, uh, that we need a satellite office, uh, out in the first suburbs area. Not first suburbs, but, um, because some of, like, Silverton and all that, they won't be included. But in the Forest Park, Woodline area, um, Tri-County, Springdale area, there will be a satellite office opening up, um, June the twenty-seventh. We'll have a celebration from one to three. Everyone is welcome to come. The ribbon cutting will be at one-thirty. And so just excited about having JFS, EMA, um, out there. Um, and EMA will have some exciting drone exhibitions while they are there. So it's coming to fruition. So excited about that. I attended a, a ribbon cutting, um, yesterday. The Brunch Deluxe is the name of this small business. It's a black-owned business. Uh, Mr. Paul McMillan and his family have been looking at, uh, they had a vision for about ten years where they wanted to go and, and have this establishment. You need to go out there and check it out. It's in Bon Hill. Um, the address is twelve forty-one, California. Uh, you won't regret it. The food is just magnificent. Um, and then this morning I had OKI Board of Directors meeting. Uh, lots of transportation issues came up, doing a lot of good work. Uh, for those of you who don't know, if you get on the OK, get on the OKI website, there's a housing dashboard. You can look and see where how, the houses that are available, vacant land, everything you want to know about housing, uh, is on their website. And it's very easy, uh, to tap into. And lastly, um, the Juneteenth celebration will be happening tomorrow. For those of you who are listening, uh, in front of the courthouse, um, we'll be meeting out there and have a, a short program. We'll also ring the bell as we always do. Juneteenth is just so, uh, important for us to recognize. Uh, and when I came in two thousand and nineteen, uh, we did our first proclamation to recognize Juneteenth. And then in twenty-twenty, uh, we have made, Hamilton County made this a holiday in Hamilton County way before the federal governor did. And then in twenty-twenty-one, we had our fir- first flag raising. So this will be our fourth year for doing that. So please come out if you can. It starts at ten o'clock. And that's all I have.
Thank you. Commissioner Reese?
Uh, thank you very much. My chief of staff is on jury duty. So I don't have all of the events. I know we did a whole lot. Uh, but I do want to thank, uh, Jackie Taggart Boyd in my office for stepping up. I don't want to thank, uh, Al Chang that's helping us with outreach. And it's just been a good team effort because we've had a lot of events that we have had to do and stop by. I want to, um, have a couple of things. One is the Cincinnati Black Music Walk of Fame. Of course, we had the, uh, Black Music Month kickoff at Hard Rock Casino and want to thank them again. It was a great thing. Uh, we announced the inductees. The late, great jazz legend icon Nancy Wilson will be inducted. Uh, the gospel music icon, Dottie Peoples will be inducted. The Ohio Players will be inducted. And, uh, the mighty OJs will be inducted. That will be Saturday, July twenty-sixth. And it'll be at noon, we'll be lined up to march in. We're wearing all white again. March in and start to line up at eleven AM. And at twelve noon, it gets started. Uh, we'll have a, a great affair. We'll be able to talk a little bit more about that. With that being said, we've always had a great partnership with the library and I'm excited about this new partnership, uh, and unveiling of a, a display. We had a display at the, uh, CBG Airport, Cincinnati Northern Kentucky International Airport. Uh, first time having that type of display. And I want to thank, uh, I know Candace has retired, but I want to thank CBG for having us there and having the Stars on residency. And now the Stars will have a permanent home with a permanent exhibit at our Cincinnati Hamilton County Library. And so on Wednesday at, uh, one o'clock, one, we, at one fifteen started, but everybody, music will start at one o'clock. And the library will be the unveiling of that exhibit. We have a partnership, uh, go down to the Cincinnati Black Music Walk of Fame, have a great time. You could dance, you can learn, you can get educated. But then you could get more information. Uh, as someone told me, man, I need to, I want, I, I thought I knew Nancy Wilson and they had no idea that she was from Ohio. And so now they can get more information down at the library. So we're excited about that partnership. And that will be on Wednesday with a special Juneteenth celebration with music from the YOLO Band and Lavinia Campbell, who is a Cincinnati Black Music Walk of Fame influencer. They'll have music, they'll have autographs and limited edition posters. Uh, it's just going to be a great affair. So that is, uh, event is free. Uh, at the library, two years ago, we did something similar. But this time we actually have, uh, an exhibit. So, uh, really excited about that. Father's Day, we're praying for the weather to hold tight. Our goal is to get two-hundred-and-fifty-thousand people at the Cincinnati Black Music Walk of Fame. We are close. We have clickers there, so we have real numbers. We're very close. Uh, it's free. You can go down there every day, six AM to eleven PM. But on Father's Day, you can bring your father down or father figures or grandfathers. And from one to three, you can stop by and get a photo, free photo for, with your father at the Cincinnati Black Music Walk of Fame. Um, Mr. Southern Soul Big Rob will also have, uh, T-shirts he's giving away since that music fest. They've got some tickets they're going to also give away to folks. And, um, there's a dedication of a new song dedicated to fathers called The Good Guys. So hopefully, I know we've got a father's program with JFS. There's some good, some of those good fathers can come down and also be a part of that if certainly rain holds up. So, uh, and we believe it will. Uh, so just come on down. Want to tell people Father's Day. And then, of course, Jeff is getting ready for the Best Dressed Fathers contest. So, uh, you guys come on down. It's going to be a great time. He's got his outfit already ready to go. Um, also, uh, I was also at the ribbon cutting along with, uh, Commissioner Dumis for the Brunch Deluxe in, uh, the Bon Hill area, my neighborhood. Bon Hill Rose Line, so excited to see that. And Paul McMillan and his wife putting in money along with C E A I. And, uh, now you got a place to go for brunch, uh, in the, uh, Bon Hill area. So I want to give them a big, uh, round of applause as well and congratulations. Uh, my last thing is, we have an economic impact study on the banks. And I had mentioned this to Jeff, but I wanted my colleagues to also know about it. Uh, and one of the things, the Cincinnati Black Music Walk of Fame was not included in it. So I really think that, uh, we, we missed the mark there because we went from rocks where we're getting no economic impact to now over two-hundred-thousand tourists who have been down there. Uh, we've created jobs for people, the construction project and the jobs that it has created. Uh, we have, uh, contracts with the cleaning and the security, and that's economic impact. We have the event that happens every music festival weekend. And one of the hotels, uh, specifically, people are booking for the Cincinnati Black Music Walk of Fame. They have over a hundred and fifty rooms. They sell out each time. And believe me, the hotels are putting the prices, I mean, the highest prices of the year. Four hundred and fifty dollars a room. You got to have two day, two night stay. You're talking about almost a thousand dollars a person. And for the last five years, because we've had the induction for five years, although we've been open for two years. And then there's, it goes on and on and on. Uh, food, beverage, uh, all these things that it, it brings. And then the earned media, our earned media, uh, as they said, uh, it's going to be higher now. But before this year was over two million dollars with the work of Anastasia and others. Uh, we've gotten, we're in national publications. We on national TV. I mean, we couldn't buy this kind of, uh, media for Hamilton County and Cincinnati. So, uh, I think it needs to be, uh, I think the, the impact study is incomplete. It has everything except the Cincinnati Black Music Walk of Fame, and I think it needs to be included. So I think Jeff, he'll be able to talk about that. I think they're looking to have that be a part of it. But I just wanted to highlight those things. I'm sure I did a whole lot more. I can't even keep up with my own schedule. Social media can't keep up with me. But, uh, I'm glad to know this is a big county, so it's a lot of stuff for us to do, uh, in the county. Thank you.
Thank you. Uh, I just have a couple of things. Um, I did attend the Logan Commons opening down near Findlay Market. The CMHA project, the county contributed a million dollars from our ARPA funds for this project. Um, I think there are forty units or so going in there. Um, it is really nice. And I told them, you know, some folks get to look out on Sam Adams and others get to look out on Findlay Market and some get to look out on our garage. And those are the lucky ones because it's a nice-looking garage. Um, but, uh, Greg, Greg Johnson was there and many community partners. So I'm excited to, um, represent the commission at that. The other things I have are related, um, well, I did go on a bus tour this, or this morning out in Colrain. Uh, they did a bus tour. The, the Chamber of Commerce sponsored it with, uh, the Township Trustees. Um, the safety complex was one of the highlights of the tour, so I was glad to give some details about that. Um, but I thank them for the invitation to do that. But the other two things I have are related to the state. The first one is House Bill three thirty-five, which is the bill that removes inside millage for the county. This, uh, economic hit to the county would be about sixty million dollars. Uh, each county, each, each jurisdiction would have- Each county, each jurisdiction would have a loss if this bill were to go through. I know it's being talked about at the state level. Other county commissioners, I was up at One Ohio yesterday, are weighing in in opposition to 335, trying to make sure that the legislators understand the negative impact to our, our slash their constituents if this were to go through. And so I know Anson is also on this and looking to circulate a letter of opposition to House Bill 335 amongst us if we're all in agreement with that. So I'm a wholeheartedly supportive of sending that letter as soon as possible before this bill gets too far down the road. In the bill, they do allow county commissioners to raise sales tax. So they reduce taxes and we raise taxes in this bill. So I'm not a big fan. So anyway, I encourage others in the community to get up to speed on this. This is not the direction we should be headed in. So I just want to put that on the radar. The other one is, I was up at One Ohio yesterday. And for, I don't know how long I've been talking about the distribution formula. Remember, we've had one tranche of funding come down to the different districts throughout the state. We are District 2. So we are looking to move the next tranche as quickly as possible. And so we voted yesterday to allocate $40 million for that purpose. And so those dollars will be, or the application period will open up. And hopefully, we'll have that underway by the end of the year. It is a slow moving process, but at least we got the 40 million locked in for the next round. So that's my update related to One Ohio. Jeff, you're next. I know you've got a by leave and any other comments that you have.
Just two quick comments. And then there is a by leave. Commissioners, my first by leave commissioner was actually going to be related also to House Bill 335. Just because of the tremendous impact that this bill would have on the finances of the county. If we were to lose inside millage, Commissioner Drehouse, as you indicated, that is between 60 and 64 million dollars to the county's general fund. I think over the past five or six years, this county has done an incredible job of restructuring and rightsizing itself as an organization and doing the things that it needs to do to make sure that we have the right systems in place, that we're taking care of capital the way we should, that we're treating our employees the way we should. But not only that, making sure that, I mean, we have a lot of mandates under the High Revised Code that the state requires us to do. And there's always a question about, it's not as much what you do as to how you go about doing it. Reentry is a, is a great example where we have the responsibility under the High Revised Code to run a justice center. We can run a justice center or we can run a justice center that includes programming to make sure that people who enter that facility get the support and the wraparound services they need so that they do not go right out and come right back into the facility. We do that through a lot of means, some over at the sheriff's office, some through our Department of Reentry. But it's, when you talk about a 16% to 17% reduction in the county's general fund budget, you start to threaten the way the county goes about doing the work it is mandated to do. So you're right, Commissioner, we are working on a strategy to, to reach out to our, not only our delegation, but also other local officials to have them weigh in on this. I've spoken to my counterparts in Montgomery and Franklin County as well. This would have just as devastating an impact in those communities as it would here. So more to come on this. But I had been told, when I first heard about this bill, it was easy almost to just assume that it was not, you know, wouldn't, this thing wouldn't fly. But I'm hearing more and more about traction that it is gaining at the State House. And so I think we need to take this threat really seriously. So.
Can I just add in, related to that threat, that it's a standalone bill right now, but there has been talk about rolling it into the budget. And so conference committee will start soon. And that's the fear, that it'll get rolled into the budget. So we're, we're up against a timeline here. Commissioner?
Yeah. Can I, can I answer? I want to follow up what you were saying. Is there any way, we need to be on record. I know you're up there, but we want to, like you said, be united. And I know we've got letters flying for other things. But this one is, like you said, it is going to destroy. The state is notorious for what I call trickle down taxation. They cut the tax at the top and they want us at the bottom to raise the taxes with no choice. And we're saying no, I know I'm saying no, to raising taxes. But at the same time, we've got to make sure that we're fighting for this. So I would be supportive of a letter or whatever, resolution letter. I know they've got testimony, but some in writing that we're on, we're united against this on behalf of the taxpayers of Hamilton County. It's kind of interesting. We send our taxes up there and now they don't want to give it back. And so I want to be supportive and whatever we need to do, just please.
We are, we are pulling together a letter on that. So we'll circulate it to the board for a comment.
Do you know the timeframe for the letter, Jeff?
We've got a couple in drafts, one to other electeds and then one to the, one to the board. So if not later today, tomorrow probably.
Yeah, I appreciate you looping in the other countywide electeds because I think it's really important that we're all weighing in. Yeah, okay.
In a, in a similar vein, I just, as an example, was using reentry, but just wanted to make the board aware. I will be on the board's behalf, attending the Welcome Home Reentry Docket Graduation tomorrow over in Judge Cross's courtroom with Trina Jackson. So I just wanted to make sure that the board is aware of that. I will represent the board and I'm sure it'll be a great event. So happy to do that. And also, Commissioner, the only by leave I have is a, it is actually a, an appointment to the Community Development Advisory Committee. I'm happy to bring it forward unless I know sometimes.
Yeah, I'm happy to do it. So by leave one is a resolution reappointing the four members. Again, these are reappointments to SEDAC, the Community Development Advisory Committee. So there are Christian Davis, Nicholas Donardo, Kathleen Kennedy, and Adrian Wiley. Without any concern, I'm going to make a motion to.
Make a comment?
Oh, yes, ma'am.
Yeah, just in general, I think it's really good that the board reviews those applications or, because we definitely have lots of vacancies, but some, all the boards are important. But this one particularly, I think my colleagues were agreeing with one of our applications that had no real background or resume as it relates to community development advisory and the fact that they're advising others in the community development component. I thought that we needed someone who had some background, even though a new person, a novice is always good. But I also recommended that we look at the applicant and recommend where else they could be used because we don't want to turn anybody away. So I'm glad we went with these four.
Commissioner Reese, any comments? All right, I'm going to make a motion to approve a by leave one.
Second.
Commissioner Drehouse?
Yes.
Commissioner Summer Dumas?
Yes.
Commissioner Reese?
Yes.
Great, thank you. All right, well, we've got three, four regular agenda items. Three of them are the engineers. And I know Todd Long is here. Todd, please walk us through these.
Thank you, President Drehouse. If you'd like, do you want to go through the four items or just three of the engineer and then switch?
Oh, that's right. We got, let's do the three first.
First, you got it. The first engineer item is a resolution requesting approval for a bid award for the 2025 sidewalk and repair replacement program located in Anderson, Colrain, Columbia, Springfield, and Sycamore Townships. Bids were opened on 5/8/25. Dad's Bobcat Service LLC was the lowest bidder. Engineer's estimate was $111,170. The bid award amount is $119,431.50. That's 7.4% over the engineer's estimate, but within tolerable ranges for award, award rather. This funding will come out of the HCEO Road and Bridge Fund. Estimated completion will be October of 2025. Second item is a resolution designating a Federal Public Assistance Authority agent for the Hamilton County Engineers Office for the flood, for the flood mitigation assistance grant for fiscal year, from fiscal year 2023 for Round Bottom Road Scoping Project. Designee from our office will be Todd Gadberry, our deputy engineer. This is a kind of a formality in the federal process to name a designated for the process. That's what this resolution is doing for the record. And then item number three under the engineers is a resolution approving the Third Amendment to an agreement for Strand and Associates for the professional engineering services for Fields, Erdel, and Conray Road Improvements. That's Project 501707. It's located in the city of Sharonville in Sycamore Township. The agreement in total would be, which includes the original amount and the amendment, is $377,843. The Third Amendment, which we're seeking approval for today, is in the amount of $48,700. That's the request for today. These funds will come out of the Permissive Auto Funds of the Engineers Office. I'll pause there for questions.
Are there any questions, Commissioner Summer Dumas?
Just one question, Todd. As far as the range that we can go over, is it a 10% and then we have to re, re-build it?
I believe that it's been 10% in the past. It's been moved up slightly. The percentage escapes me, to be honest, what the total is. I know it's a little in excess of 10.
It's in excess of 10.
In excess of 10 now, yes.
That's all I have.
Commissioner Reese?
No question.
All right. Thank you for that explanation. I'm going to move that we approve of regular agenda items, one through three.
Second. Commissioner Drehouse?
Yes.
Commissioner Summer Dumas?
Yes.
Commissioner Reese?
Yes.
All right, and let's move on to item number four.
Thank you. Item number four is a resolution authorizing the renewal agreement with CDM Smith, Inc. for the professional consultant services for the Hamilton County Stormwater District. These services are part of the fourth permit term under the National Pollutant Discharge Elimination System. These two stormwater permit is obligations under the Ohio EPA. The original agreement was approved in June, at the end of June of 2023. It's allowing for a one-year agreement with four one-year optional renewals. This would be the second of the optional one-year renewals approved, which would cover the services from June of 2025 through June of 2026. The agreement is in the amount of $742,368. Funding will come from the Hamilton County Stormwater District Fund. Happy to entertain any questions.
Can you tell us exactly what the consultant does?
I sure can, thank you. The consultant serves a number of different roles. As the board is partially aware, I'm sure that the Stormwater District does not have individual full-time employees. We are a partnership of different county agencies. And we use the services of this consultant to help us with a number of different things administratively. They also support the co-permites, which are the other jurisdictions within Hamilton County that are part of the permit itself with certain services under the six minimum control measures as part of the permit. They also help us with creating the billing file, annual reporting to the EPA, which is part of our charge. They help us develop and stay on top of rules and regulation changes in the, in the environmental world. And they also support the partner agencies in general, amongst other services they provide for us.
Okay, thank you. Commissioner Summer Dumas, any questions?
No questions.
Commissioner Reese?
No question.
Okay, I'm going to move that we approve of regular agenda item number four.
Second.
Commissioner Drehouse?
Yes.
Commissioner Summer Dumas?
Yes.
Commissioner Reese?
Yes.
Thanks.
Thank you, Commissioners.
All right, Jeff, let's move into the consent agenda.
Thank you, Commissioners. Item five on the consent agenda is the administration's actions for May of '25. Item number six is the execution of a quitclaim deed with the Great Parks Board of Parks Commissioners. This specifically, Commissioner, has been worked on for a long time. This is the land swap that we are doing with Great Parks out at the Regional Safety Complex, swapping about six acres of land each so that the operations of the Regional Safety Complex works a lot more efficiently and effectively. So it's a win-win for both parties. And I want to thank Anson and the, and the staff at the Park District for working on this for multiple years now. So we're finally getting this completed. Item number seven is an amendment of our American Rescue Plan funding, reclassifying ARPA funds. This relates to the Community Action Agency and the emergency housing program and reclassifying that to mortgage assistance. Item number eight is actually the amendment with the Community Action Agency to do that reclassification, moving funding from the emergency housing, emergency immigrant housing to mortgage assistance at $205,241. Item number nine is a budget adjustment. It includes multiple items and an adjustment in the Engineers Office for, I believe, First Street in Addiston, Sutton Road in Anderson Township. There's also some flood mitigation adjustments for Wesselman Road and Round Bottom Road. There is a budget amendment and probation for some electronic monitoring units, as well as the awarding of some grants in social and service justice programs. Social services and justice programs, the total is $4.979 million. Item number 10 is a resolution appropriating $50.5 million in grants. These are all of our state fiscal, all of our grants, or most of our grants that follow state fiscal year. This is appropriating those particular grants. Item number 11 is the bid awards and contracts authorized or executed by the Purchasing Department for May of '25. It's $608,000. Item 12 is a resolution authorizing the purchase of a Ford Explorer in the Sheriff's Office for $41,886. Item 13 is a resolution authorizing the purchase of a Dodge Durango as a replacement in the Sheriff's Office, $35,903. Item 14 is the purchase of a Ford, 2025 Ford utility as a replacement in the Sheriff's Office, $41,366. Item 15, the purchase of a Dodge Durango in the Sheriff's Office, $31,680. Item 16 is accepting purchase orders for Hamilton County and authorizing their execution and release. This is at $460,000. These are some trailers in the Engineers Office and vouchers for children services families. Item 17 is the authorization of an invitation to bid on behalf of the engineer for a Ford F-350 utility bodies, I'm sorry, for Ford F-350 utility bodies, $125,187. Item number 18 is the item that was held from last week. This is the escalator portion of a broader club vertical transportation project with Kone. This is $1.525 million. Item number 19 is for environmental services. This is a grant to scrap to home, to repurpose scrap wood for, from construction sites, $14,717. 20 through 22 are JFS items. The first is an agreement with Presidential Consultants LLC for Project Moore. This is the JFS's mentoring program, $150,000. Item 21 is a renewal of an agreement with, between Hamilton County Job and Family Services and Universal Transportation Systems for Children's Services Transportation Services, $1.263 million. Item 22 is renewal number four of an original agreement with Women Helping Women for Domestic Violence Services at $1.277 million. The total of all of your JFS items, Commissioners, are $2.691 million. Item number 23 is the report of no objection to one liquor permit application, Hawkstone Associates on Harrison Avenue in Harrison Township. And item 24 is the monthly investment report from the treasurer for May of '25. And that is your consent agenda, Commissioners.
Thank you. Could you dig in just a little bit on item number 10? This is the one for 15 million related to the grants. Could you get us, just give us a better understanding? It's such a high dollar amount.
Sure. And if I could get from the clerk, item number 10, I'm happy to.
Sorry.
A little bit more detail on that.
I apologize for not asking earlier. It was on my list. I just forgot to ask you.
Thank you, Commissioners. And sorry, usually I have these in front of me and I did not today. So I apologize for that. So yes, these are various grants within the county that follow state fiscal year. So it is anything from some of our Title IV placement grants in juvenile court, our youth services grants in juvenile court. We have various probation grants, emergency management, state emergency response grants, grants for the Mental Health Recovery Services Board, municipal court grants, probation grants. So there is a variety of department, a range of departments throughout the county that have a lot of their funding that comes from grants that follow the state fiscal year. This is appropriating all of those. I'm looking right now to see if there's one in particular that stands out in terms of dollar amount. Looks like there's one, we are the pass-through funding agency for the River City Correctional Facility. They obviously follow a state grant cycle. That's $11 million. There's a Mental Health Recovery Services Board grant for $8 million. So those are just some of the larger ones. And I see that Budget Director Wagner has entered the room, so. You probably want to go to.
You need to go up. I know you don't want to, but you have to.
Commissioners, I just. Commissioners, I just wanted to state that on the state grant fiscal cycle, a lot of these are two-year grants now. So we're appropriating for two years, so they, it's very large, like River City. There's several of them in there, but they're like River City. So that is for a two-year fiscal period. Next year, you'll see that when we do the state grants, it'll probably be like 8 million. But then, and then in '27 again, you'll see a large one for the state grant.
Okay, yeah, I was just struck by the large dollar amount. And so to be clear, these are grants coming into the county to these various departments for the work that they're doing.
That's correct, that's correct. And this, these are appropriations that need to be live July 1st.
Got you.
Because a lot of them cover personnel, especially River City. This is their, this is their big money one, funded one, so.
Okay, great, thank you very much. Commissioner Summer Dumas?
No question. I just think as we talk about the grants, how important they are to our stability as a county, and prayerfully, they'll continue to come in.
Yep, thank you. Commissioner Reese?
Is it just on the grants or we're talking about the consent agenda?
The agenda.
Okay, yes, thank you for the clarification. I have, item number nine, I wanted to bring attention to because people are still out here struggling on their property taxes and their mortgages. And so item number nine allows us to move additional 200,000, 205-plus thousand dollars through the Community Action Agency, if I'm not mistaken. Is it nine or eight? Sorry, item number eight, item number eight. It allows us now to have an additional 200,000 to try to help, you know, as many people as we can. My understanding, there's already a long list, so I just wanted to bring some highlights to that. Also, I'd like to pull out item number 18. That is the item, I want to make sure I got the right number, a resolution number P108-25, authorizing the purchase of Paycor Stadium Club entrance vertical transportation escalators. This is part of the MOU. And I, if it's something that's in the current lease that we have right now, we have obligated, we, I've been voting to keep that fixed up. My understanding that we already voted to hopefully fix some other escalators, but my understanding is that the elevators are still working right now. And this is to order, pre-order some materials, steel, if you will, I think, is what you said last week, Mr. Ludo. Pre-order for something for 2026 or something. But my understanding is the MOU says if we get a deal, we don't get a deal, we don't move forward. So I don't know how we're buying all these supplies. And my understanding, the Bingo's ownership, after we had our thing, oh, they were hot. I don't know why they were so hot. Because the part on their deal, I don't know if they wrote a check today, but they're part of the deal. I don't know if we have a check for 120 million. I don't know, Mr. Ludo, help me, if we, did we get a check for 120 million? But you want the county to move forward quickly and we got to hurry up and write a check on behalf of the taxpayers. This is 1.5 million, more than 1.5 million. I think that, and if it's just putting some steel and ordering it, it ain't going to get here to 2026. I don't know why they were so hot, that we don't have a lease. So I got to not support that and I have to take that out at this time because I think, you know, it can get resolved later. We are always on the hook. And it's been one-sided. Every time it's time for the taxpayer side, we got to hurry up. We got a deadline. And then when it's time for us to do something, is what we gonna take our time? We ain't got no deadline, y'all just hold up. And I just think that's just sending a wrong message. And we're already spending money when we say we not gonna spend no money if we don't get no deal. But we already spending it right today and I just think that gives a mixed signal. So I like to pull 18 out and we have to vote on it. I know I'm, probably don't have the votes to stop it, but I got to stand up for the people that put me here.
Okay, let me just comment then to item number 18. We had a conversation about this last week. I mean, this is something that is basic upkeep, making sure the stadium is accessible, efficient, and safe for the folks that will be in there, whether it's for a game or concert or whatever else is going on in the facility. And so it's money that we would have to spend one way or the other. So I'm in favor of making sure that this arrives on time for, I guess it's the season next year. So, and we've been talking about this for months, to be fair. I don't feel rushed at all on this item because it's been in front of us for quite some time. So I will, though, support removing it from the rest of the agenda. And so in that case, unless you have a comment, I'm going to move that we.
Yeah, I have a comment.
Okay, go ahead.
Because we tabled it last time, because, well, I suggested we table it, but I was able to find out the information I need to find out as it relates to this specific issue. So I'm fine with pulling it out.
Okay, yes.
And I appreciate that, but I want to make sure to, because I'm not trying to, I don't mind anyone disagreeing with me, but if the place is unsafe, then it needs to be shut down today, if it's unsafe. So I don't want to run with the safety issue because we said the place was safe. I asked Mr. Ludo, is it unsafe? If it's unsafe, it needs to have the yellow tape around it and the place need to be shut down. But it's safe because they starting the season and they're going to be over there in the place. So I don't mind a difference of opinion, but I got a problem when they try to, when they try to paint it as unsafe. The other thing, it has not, maybe it's been, you know, you've been at a lot more meetings than I have, but it has not been before me, I didn't see it on the agenda until last week. My understanding was the MOU, which I voted against, was supposed to be down the road. Everything in that MOU, they said was based on, Mr. Ludo said it was language in there. It says based on if we get a lease. If we don't get a lease, it's not in there. Now this comes up as an expenditure from that 65 million additional cost. So I don't mind difference of opinion, but safety, I don't want that pinned on because I'm all about safety. If it's unsafe, I need the inspectors to go over there today and shut the place down if it's not safe. If it's just a difference of opinion, I have no problem with that.
I appreciate that, Commissioner, but I will, I will call it like I see it, which is if we don't have escalators that are working properly, I find that to be unsafe. So that's.
Yeah, I'm just saying, I mean, if it's unsafe, I call it.
I can describe it.
That they're using it over there.
Okay.
I'm just saying, if it's not safe.
So, all right.
Then shut it down, but I think that's a big thing.
You're entitled to using your language. I will.
It's my opinion. I mean, you just said it's unsafe. It's unsafe.
I find.
And that's a big deal.
I find that if the escalators aren't working, that provides an unsafe environment for the folks that are in the facility. And when you talk about it's being in front of us, I didn't say it was only in front of us on an agenda that has been recent, but prior to that, we've been discussing this. So I just wanted to clarify the point. So I'm going to make a motion.
I haven't.
That we move forward and approve of items five through 17 and 19 through 24.
Second.
Commissioner Drehouse?
Yes.
Commissioner Summer Dumas?
Yes.
Commissioner Reese?
No. Oh, to put it on a consent, yes.
That was all the consent agenda.
Oh, yes, we're consenting, I'm sorry. Can we have the re-vote? I'm sorry, I thought we were moving this out, I apologize.
Okay, so we've voted, yes, yes.
And yes.
All right. Now we're going to move to item number 18. I'm going to move that we approve of item number 18.
Second.
Commissioner Drehouse?
Yes.
Commissioner Summer Dumas? Commissioner Reese?
No.
Thank you. All right, we've got two executive sessions today. Going to move that we go into executive session pursuant to ORC Section 121.22G2 to discuss the sale or acquisition of property and an executive session pursuant to ORC Section 121.22G2 to discuss the sale or acquisition of property.
Second.
Commissioner Drehouse?
Yes.
Commissioner Summer Dumas? Commissioner Reese?
Yes.
Thank you.